Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. As always, let us begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent moment of meditation or prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. As we begin tonight, we have a 7:00 PM public hearing with the permit representative from National Grid submitting an application for grant of a location to install and maintain a gas main on Hoyle Street in the area of Washington Street. Would you please read the notice?
You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted by the Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, in the Harry B. Butters chambers, Room 34 Norwood Memorial Municipal Building upon the following petition of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 275 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Hoyle Street, Norwood, from the existing 60 PSIG gas main near House Number 16, Hoyle Street, Easterly to 843-845, Washington Street, due to water intrusion and service interruptions in 516 Hoyle Street, along which designated route of line you are an owner of real estate as determined by the last proceeding assessment for taxation, Board of Selectmen, Paul A., Bishop Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Malville. Mary, would you like to step up and have a seat, please? We're missing a microphone here, so just wait one second. Mary, we met a few minutes ago, but for the adequacy of the people at home and for the record, would you please give your damn in position?
My name is Mary Maloney, work for National Grid as a permit representative.
Thank you, and tonight we're talking about a grant of a license to do some work?
To put a new gas main on Hoyle Street in Norwood.
Pretty brief, I guess.
Oh, I can get into the detail of it, but...
There was a recommendation here, and we discussed it, you and I, from the superintendent of the Public Works Department. According to him, the plan shows a proposed gas line being installed off the travel lane in the grassy area between the sidewalk and the roadway, which would require a removal of some tree streets, street trees, rather. He is recommending go onto the pavement itself, but it's my understanding from you, if you want to explain a little further, that it's actually going to be on the roadway.
I believe, just looking at the plan, that it is in the street, and I'm going to confirm that tomorrow and get back to you, just to make sure.
Yeah, I think there's three or four recommendations here, but that's the most serious of the four. Any questions from the board at all? Mr. Haja?
Yes, Mary, on recommendation number two from our town engineer, he's talking about curb-to-curb redoing of the roadway surface, middle of the surface, and the monolithic burn on both sides. What about the corners themselves? Are they, the curbing, is it just asphalt curbing? Is it granite curbing? Is it, what is it? And what are we replacing it with if they have to be changed, damaged, or whatever?
I'm not really certain what's out there, the existing roadway.
Right, hard to tell from this drawing what is, and it's not mentioned, Mr. Chairman, in the recommendation. He doesn't talk about the curbing.
Here's what the situation seems to be this evening. Mary is a last-minute fill-in, if I have it correct, for Barbara Kelleher, who normally does this work. So Mary does not have all the information, actually. So what my recommendation would be tonight, if the board agrees, is to listen to Mary's application and then do everything contingent upon Mr. Ryan's recommendation. We agree to it, but we agree to Mr. Ryan's recommendation. So once the gas company tells us that's fine, then they can go ahead and commit to the job. Does that make sense to either of them?
Yes, as long as Mr. Ryan falls up on the curbing itself.
Everything that's on his list here.
Well, he's not talking about the corners, but there could be granite curbing at the corners. That's just a straightaway curbing, which is a long look at asphalt, which I understand. But the corners themselves could be something different, we don't know, so...
That's correct, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mrs. Maloney, just obviously, what we're doing here is replacing an existing main that, we talked about water infiltration. It's basically, it needs to be replaced because it's failing and it could be a danger. So this is, this is not a new installation, but an improvement?
No, correct. One of the properties on Hoyle Street is having service interruption because they're getting water in the surface from the main, and it's just to leave that whole section of houses and put a new main in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think both sides are in agreement that it has to be done, it's just how they go about doing it. And Mr. Ryan, our superintendent, has one way of doing it, and apparently, from the paperwork, it appears there's another way from the National Grid. So as long as we can get National Grid to agree to doing it our way, that's always the best way, by the way.
Correct.
We'll be happy.
You're the customer.
So do I have any recommendations? Any other questions from the board?
I think this may, as Mr. Ryan indicates, I think you're looking at the property line, but then there's the right-of-way. So you're at the edge of the right-of-way, but at the edge of the right-of-way is where there's a grass strip of trees and everything.
That's what you, so...
Anyhow.
Yeah.
It's a traffic case that we can't solve, can it?
I'm going to let the engineers look at it tomorrow, the engineers, I should say.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt, well, close the hearing.
We're going to close the hearing, first.
You need to close.
Is there any questions to the public, like senior public? So I'll take that recommendation, Mr. Haja.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. I have a motion to close the hearing, and a second. Recommendations from the board?
Move to adopt with Mr. Ryan's recommendation and a re-review of the corner curbs.
Anything contingent upon?
His recommendations, which I have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need a second for a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Mary, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This guy's amazing, you.
That is the only appointment we have here this evening. The rest will be new business. Number one, Patricia Oginski of 76 Casey Street submitting a request to have their neighborhood block party and to shut down their street, which is Casey Street, from number 68 to number 86 on Saturday, September 28th, from 2:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And this, this has been an annual event for some years now.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve and inform the police and the Public Works if we haven't already.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. As stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number two, Jim Henry, Winged Foot Running submitting a request to hold a Halloween 5K road race, Monster Dash, if you will, on Sunday, October 27th, from 9:30 AM, starting at 9:30 AM, pre and post activities to take place at the Cleveland School, and the safety officer has been involved with the logistics of this event. Motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, and again, this is an annual event. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number three, Christina Robinson Davis, Market of Hope submitting a request to put lawn signs on the rotary at Norwood High School, the end of Nickel Street, near St. Timothy's Church, and the island near Shattuck Park, at the end of Prospect Street, at Winter Street, and the island running down the middle of Nickel Street, to publicize the Market of Hope, which is to be hosted by St. Timothy's Church and will be held on October 19th, 2019. This, again, also is an annual event.
Motion to approve? Second.
Mr. Chairman? And a second? All, sir?
A question. The request doesn't say when they want to put up the signs, and I don't know what their tradition has been, when we approve something around the rotaries and et cetera, is it there for two weeks, four weeks, six, whatever?
Usually it will be, Mrs. Malville, two weeks prior to the event? It'll be two weeks prior to the event?
Okay, as long as the applicant knows that, that's all.
If it comes down, I'll immediately follow.
And it come down, exactly. Thank you. So I have a motion to approve with those stipulations, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. October meeting, there are five Tuesdays in October, does the board wish to cancel one meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
That's why you ought to take it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm thinking that we have voted to have a special town meeting on Monday, October 7th, so if we do want to take out a meeting in October, I think maybe it might be wise to take out Tuesday, October 8th.
Second.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Banter?
Just a recommendation, I would recommend if you are going to pick one, to pick the 22nd. I know that's in the middle of month, but Mr. Cooper and I are both not here that day, and I believe Mr. Plasko is traveling that day, so that would just be my recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. Anything on the motion, Mr. Haja?
My only concern about canceling the Tuesday after special time meetings, if there's something that we have to act upon, or fix, or do something as a result of that, we may not have time to do it without that meeting, unless you have to call a special. So I'm just thinking of how we would logistically do that if we cancel the meeting officially.
Mr. Plasko, have a comment?
I was just going to say, we do typically post the meeting before the special, but that also doesn't give you much time to discuss anything or get any, gather any information, if that's what's necessary, within a couple days between the Monday and the Thursday time meeting. But if it needs just an official vote, we would have a meeting earlier that evening.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to remove October 8th from our selectmen's schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will eliminate the 8th of October from our schedule.
Yes.
For our number five, Robert F. Sullivan, Sr., manager for Xfinity, submitting notice that the Turner Classic Movies is moving to sports entertainment package, October 10th, 2019. I don't know how I'll get by.
Information.
Information, and I have a second on that?
Yes.
Thank God for DirecTV. Number six, Cemetery Deeds, for review and signature of the board? I'm sorry, did I vote on that?
No, you didn't.
Okay. All in favor, taking it as information?
Aye.
I have a second and a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number six, Cemetery Deeds, for review and signature of the board?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve and second for signatures, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number seven, David Kissel, 59 Westover Parkway, submitting correspondence regarding a parcel of land off of Deerfield Road.
Mr. Jim?
Sir?
I don't know if the manager wants to discuss, we had some discussion on this earlier, and it appears that this is a parcel of land that is landlocked and surrounded by town land.
Correct.
And...
I'm sorry, surrounded by?
Owned by the town.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So it might be appropriate that we look into what would be involved in possibly purchasing it. I think from the letter that we got, they're willing to be reasonable what they asked for the property, but they'd like to take care of matters and get that sold in one fashion or another. So I think maybe if we turn it over to the manager to follow up on the particulars and see if it's doable or not, that we purchase it.
Second.
I have a motion to turn the situation over to the manager for further investigation and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just for the public at home, it's about an acre and a half parcel that's landlocked, we don't believe it's buildable. I think it has an assessed value of $20,000, and that number is probably nowhere near what we would end up paying for it, so we're not talking about a large acquisition here.
But at least it'll begin a negotiation, kind of a conversation.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Yeah. On a related matter, wasn't there a parcel that we had asked you to look at up near, head towards the Willet, on a piece of property that someone actually wanted to buy from us, but it had easement on it?
Oftentimes, what happens with those is when we go through the process and decide how we have to sell it, what the value is, a lot of folks don't end up not showing any interest. I'll double-check on that one, but I believe that's what happens. Sometimes folks think that, because the town has land, they can simply sell a parcel for next to nothing, and they find out that sometimes we either have to go out to bid for it, depending on how we acquired it, and then often you see the interest drop off like that.
You can put it on your agenda, though, when those things happen, just so we get feedback and, like this, don't remember a few months later and say what's going on with it.
Sure, well, a lot of times, it's we call somebody, let them know, and they say, "Okay, I'll be in touch," and then we never hear anything again.
The piece of property we're discussing is a piece of property on Manhattan Street that backs up to Rarod Avenue. Their property stops, and then there's a property lot between the backs of the home on Manhattan Street that abuts to Rarod Avenue, and they're looking into purchasing that. That's what we were going to clean up, if you remember.
We had that, Mr. Chairman, just, we had that one, and the other one was up on Roxanna, right?
Manhattan Street, backs up to Roxanna.
Yeah.
They declined to go forward with the purchase.
All right, so I mean, we're acting on these things, and people inquire, we get back to them, and if nothing happens...
And also, what happens, how we came into a parcel determines how we can sell it. If it's land at low value, if it's, we happen to own a three-square-foot patch near somebody's house, that's easy, you can just distribute it easily. Property that we tax-acquired is easier to get rid of than property that was donated or property that we own, so sometimes folks just want to be able to cut a check to the town, and sometimes we technically have to take bids on it, sometimes you have to offer it to all the neighbors in an area, so depending on how we acquired the property depends on the process, and a lot of times, folks, understandably so, just don't want to go through the hassle once we tell them, well, there's going to be a bidding process, and...
Do you know, or does anyone know offhand if the principle of adverse possession...
Does not affect a municipality.
It doesn't affect municipal land, right? So somebody could have used it for 23 years.
Especially if you were one with the needs.
It's still ours, yeah.
Doesn't apply to municipal.
Okay, thank you.
That's the case, so what we just talked about previously. Yeah, Mr. Kissel.
Okay.
Some of these parcels of land are very strange and restructured. I think one of them was eight feet wide, 100 feet long.
We do have a report that the DPW is preparing on land at low value, and we may be able to look at that and sell off a lot of small parcels that really don't add to any of our numbers anywhere, but you're talking about a couple hundred dollars here or there, where we own an eight-foot-by-three-foot stretch of land, not eight-foot-by-three, but even sometimes it's four-by-four land near somebody's house, and it just, somehow the town came into possession of it, and there's no reason to hold on. There's not really a big value to the town in selling them, but you get them off your books and adds the value of a property, so we'll be bringing that before once we do some...
That's a good idea, okay.
QA on it.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can go on to number eight. Tuck O'Brien, Senior Counsel for SQF LLC submitting an application to place new utility poles at AT&amp;T Small Wireless Facility in the town of Norwood public right-of-way for our perusal. There doesn't seem to be a lot of information on this. What I would ask is that we could set this up for a hearing in the future and have somebody in to tell us exactly what they want to do and what it means to the town of Norwood, if there's any benefit at all.
Do we have to have a hearing, or can we just bring them in?
No, no, it's just like any light pole hearing. Do we check with the light department or anyone on this?
They did. If you remember, this actually came before the board, and then we kicked the application back because there were just a lot of...
They had other towns.
Right, right.
Yeah. My recommendation is that when we do have a hearing, I do believe it's technically a pole hearing, we should have the light department and the engineering department in here of the DPW.
Motion to set up the hearing as required, and then check with council what that is.
Second.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion and a second to set up a hearing on this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number nine, Selectman William Plasko brings up two points. A, insertion on special town meeting warrant of adoption of Chapter 59, Section 5, causes 17C and 1/2, 17D and 17E is an echo pertaining to surviving spouses' tax exemptions. And we've decided we're going to hold that for a few minutes for the manager's update.
Yeah, it's item 12 when we're discussing the warrant.
Correct. And...
And on...
B.
B, that has to do with...
Appointment of a committee to oversee.
You recall the town approved the tax voluntary check donation for disabled and elderly individuals. It was actually at my request, we had received an application from, I think it was Trish Monahan, to be on the committee, and we, at least I hadn't even actually seen what the committee is and is supposed to do. In the meantime, have a copy of the law, and it's very simple, it's the treasurer and the Board of Assessors Chairman and three residents, and then they make the rules and regulations for distribution of funds. We now have a tax bill that's gone out asking for the, if people want to make these donations, so in theory, at least, funds will be coming in, so I think it's time that we move forward with the appointing of the committee, and I guess I would recommend that we open the period for two weeks, ask anyone who might be interested in serving on this committee to make an application to the board, and after that, we'll see how many applications we get, decide how to proceed with filling those positions.
Thank you, sir. I did speak to Kerry McCarthy earlier this week, and like you said, there was only one applicant so far, we want a few more. So if there's somebody from the senior community that would like to get involved, I'd really like to have you involved, because this really seriously affects the seniors and anybody of any type of a disability. So if you fit in one of those categories and you're at all interested, please step forward and notify us here at the Selectmen's Office so we can get this program up and running.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
And I would just add to it that we vote that the chairman of our board do those appointments.
Thank you.
So that's a, that's a motion and an amended, and an amendment?
Well, just added to it.
Yeah, all right, so I'll second, I'll second motion and amendment.
Okay, I have a second. Motion and a second, and amended, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Back to number 10, if I could. Paul Halakiotis, Planning Director of the Town of Norwood submitting for its signature of the board a community development block grant mortgage lien discharge on a home on Walnut Avenue. Mr. Plasko, could you just explain that to the people at home so they know what it is?
Basically, the town participated in a program where people could get low-interest loans to make improvements on their homes. Most of the time, it involved sanitary code-type issues, leaky roofs, whatever, and if they owned their homes for a 15-year period, the loan was forgiven, and if they sold their home within that 15-year period on a schedule, they would pay off whatever the balance was of that loan. And in this case, the individual that got such a loan has sold their house or is in the process of selling their house.
Correct.
And therefore, they're paying back to the town the portion of the mortgage loan that's still outstanding.
Thank you.
And I move to sign, the board sign.
I have a motion to sign the discharge papers and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 11, Patricia D. Schultz of 4 Overlook Drive submitting application to use the town common gazebo for wedding ceremony on Saturday, October 26th, from 3:00 PM until 4:00 PM in the afternoon. Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 12, special town meeting warrant, October 7th, 2019, special town meeting warrant to close on Tuesday, September 3rd, which is today, 2019. Comments from the board? The manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to go through the items that are on the warrant as of right now?
That's fine.
Okay, the board has this sheet here, preliminary list of special town meeting articles. I'll just go through these briefly. The first is the Moderna TIF. We have been approached by Moderna for a tax increment financing agreement related to an expansion they want to do up on Upland Road. That would accomplish that. Item number two is the Saint Streets Land Acquisition. As you know, in the spring, we looked at the possibility of acquiring about seven or acres, seven or eight acres at the end of some of the Saint Streets in South Norwood. We originally wanted to conclude that purchase at the annual town meeting, it took some time to work out the details. It would be a community preservation project, we are now ready to go forward. That's a $325,000 article from CPA funds. Article three would amend the...
Excuse me?
Sorry.
And that would be conservation?
Correct.
Under the Conservation Commission?
Correct. When you're purchasing land with CPA funds, it has to be a conservation easement or restriction, I should say, has to be placed on the land. So we would be permanently restricting that land, but we would add that seven acres to our exempted or restricted land.
Right. If I can, Mr. Chairman, how's that work with the roadways themselves? Isn't that part of the roadways that are there that we're actually purchasing? I thought, if my memory is correct, I thought the survey showed that our roadways had crossed the line on the back part, so is this...
Because a couple streets are connected?
Yes.
But not by an accepted roadway?
We'd be able to maintain that.
And in all likelihood, they'll still maintain that as access to the property?
Actually, they are dead-end streets, but there is some type of roadway that connects, but I don't believe that it's a town roadway that's been accepted.
Right, okay. Number three is a zoning article to amend the Central Business District boundary. We did get a request from a property building near Town Hall that's technically not on the Central Business District map. We changed the zoning for the downtown zoning district. If everyone remembers, at the spring town meeting, there was a request from a property that if you actually look at the map, should have been included, so this would be honoring that request to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I would just suggest that we contact Mr. Halakiotis and the planning board, and if there's still time in the hearing process and putting this together, that it also include, as I pointed out when they were here before us originally, that it should have included this piece of property, and it also should have included the adjacent abutting property that is town-owned, that we currently lease to the MBTA, so that if any time the MBTA almost stopped leasing that a couple of years ago?
Yes.
If that happened, it would already be in this, have the zoning applied to it, so it would add to the value of the property.
Okay, so for the people at home that don't understand what we're talking about, the property in question is the building that houses two businesses. One of the main businesses is Dempsey Insurance Company, and there's a dentist office on the other side. They actually are commercial businesses, they probably should have been on that map in the beginning, but they weren't. We want to change that. But beyond that, there was a part of the parking lot off of Rarod Avenue that operates from the MBTA, that is town property. So what Mr. Plasko was saying, we'd like to add not only the Dempsey Insurance building itself, but the property that's owned by the town of Norwood within the boundaries of the parking lot at Rarod Avenue train station. Everybody understands that?
Maybe make that as a separate motion and ask the correspondence be sent to Mr. Halakiotis regarding that?
Second.
Make that informal motion.
The motion is to confer with them, is that...
Send the letter asking that when they consider this amendment, that they include the town parcel.
Yeah, okay.
As it stands right now, it's just that insurance company.
Yep, okay.
Article number four is a zoning petition that has come in as a citizen's petition for 289 Walpole Street to allow greater density there. That is a private petition, that'll have to work its way through, once you have a citizen's petition signed, of course, it goes on the warrant. That being said, it'll work its way through the planning board process, I don't believe they have voted on it yet, a recommendation. Article number five would transfer funds from the FY '20 budget to the override stabilization fund. If the board remembers, we appropriated a certain amount of free cash to the school budget contingent on the override, if the override did not pass, and the discussions then between the thing common and the school committee and this board were that if the override passes, that additional allocation would not be needed, and therefore, it would would not be needed, and therefore, it would be returned to the general fund, or in this case, the override stabilization fund, which will help extend the length of the override funds.
On that, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just, Mr. Mazuka, so as it stands, we have $700,000 per the override understanding that is in what we call an override stabilization account. So this would increase that to 1.209 million.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the stipulation. If they do get the override, the money is coming back.
Well, right, I remember that discussion, and I remember it was coming back. I didn't hear at that time, there was clearly labeled for the override stabilization fund. I could be mistaken, but I remember all those discussions. Is the Finance Commission in agreement with this, or are we asking for their input before?
They can put it on the warrant, and they can discuss it.
They're going to recommend on money issues anyhow. And if they recommend something else, we can either accept that or make a motion to amend.
The bigger issue is that we get that money back.
Right, that I agree with, yep, okay.
Mr. Manager?
Article six is a $1.5 million borrowing for the Cokeley Middle School Design Services. This is for the initial feasibility and study in design services. As the Board's aware, we were accepted into the first stage of the Mass School Building Authority process. Eventually, when the project goes, assuming the project goes through, some of this money will be eligible for reimbursement. We don't, of course, see that right now. They need to see the commitment on the part of the town to begin that process.
Are we talking about roughly half coming back, 750,000?
Correct, that's average for a...
That's one people to note that at home.
...MBA project. I'm going to skip Article 7 through 11 for a minute and then come back to them because those are all the exemptions. I'll go through those separately. Article 12 is an amendment to the Senior Tax Work Off Program that we discussed last year that would allow disabled seniors to have somebody volunteer for them to receive the tax work off that their program that currently exists. Article 13 would be borrowing for water main improvements in the Sumner and Union Streets area to the tune of a million and a half dollars. However, this is actually a project that would allow Sharon to have an interconnection to our water system in the event of an emergency. For that to happen, we have to repair and replace some of the lines in this area, but this is actually, the cost is borne entirely by the Town of Sharon. Some of you will remember, we've been talking about this for quite a while. It seems like it's finally coming to fruition. So we borrow the money and Sharon ends up paying the debt service on the money.
Oh, they're going, I thought they were borrowing the money and paying it over to us.
We, well, they may be borrowing the money or taking out of cash. I don't know where they're getting their money from, but whatever that annual payment is, let's say it's $100,000, Sharon is paying that. We looked at if they could borrow it on their books and just do it on their own. That becomes a little bit more complicated because...
So they're not paying it upfront? They're going to pay out debt service over 10 years or whatever it is?
Correct. They're going to add it to their rates and just borrow the equivalent of the money, or they're just going to, it's their responsibility to come up with the money and they just pay the cost of the debt service for us.
Right. But that's going to have an adverse effect on how much we can borrow because it's going to show, technically, it's going to show that the Town of Norwood is borrowing 1.5. And when we look at what we want to do, that has to come into play. I mean, we can all say, yes, no, take it off and subtract it, but for those that are doing the books, that's, we can't do that.
We had this discussion a few weeks ago about this whole project.
Yeah, you're...
It was at no cost to us.
It's still at no cost to us.
But, I'm hoping what the Manager says.
Right, but our, so our auditors will look at that, and the rating agencies will look at that. And again, we maintain hundreds of millions of dollars worth of debt. They'll say, okay, it went up a little bit here, but you have a revenue stream that's guaranteed that covers it. So it's a net increase, but there's something else that's paying for it.
There's a...
Over 10 years?
Certainly merit to Mr. Haja's concern, but I also think the answer there is that we have such more lending capacity that unless all of a sudden we take on a whole lot of things, we're not going to get there. But I also thought that they were paying this whole thing upfront, not us.
That's the way it was alluded to us when this whole conversation took place a month ago.
But we haven't actually seen an agreement to review.
No, but so the discussion talked about no cost to the Town of Norwood.
And to be clear, there is no cost to the Town of Norwood.
Is there any reason we do this now?
Well, we want to begin the engineering and the design of the project and be able to move forward.
And they're not going to pay for that, were you?
No, 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 they're, Sharon's paying 100% of the costs.
Upfront, we have to come up with the money and then get reimbursed.
We need the authorization to borrow because we are technically borrowing the money even though they're paying for it.
If they pay us, we don't need to borrow it. They give us the money, we don't have to borrow any.
But there's over a million dollars worth of work. They're not cutting a check. They're going to add the cost of the debt service to their rates as well, just as we would if we were doing the $2 million sewer project.
Any comments from the...
I think we're being awfully generous to the Town of Sharon.
I do too.
That wasn't my understanding at all. Can we just say that the town is a placeholder for now, and we can decide on the...
Yeah, we can always recommend against it, the Town, you know?
Right. I mean, I'd like to explore what Tony's saying. I do agree that we are being generous. It's not what they understand that we talked about, but even though it's still...
What are we being generous with? This is, this is just how...
Borrowing for their behalf.
It's the way it was purported to us in the beginning.
Correct, but this is just how we make sure that there's the money. Because if they were to say, borrow a million and a half dollars to do work on our project, on our land, you technically need approval from the legislature to do that because you're purchasing property in another community in substance. So this is the, there's no giveaway from the town here. It's, we're going to borrow a million dollars to do work in our town. They're paying that whole debt service.
Over 10 years?
Correct.
All right, fine by me.
Well, we can take it up at town meeting too, and either recommend it or not stand behind it.
But I understand his point.
Personally, I think it's not the best of circumstances.
Not the preferred method, I understand how you're getting there.
But just to be clear, if we were doing this in reverse, we wouldn't do it that way. We wouldn't raise a million and a half dollars in sewer rates in one year and raise our rates 20%, and then just cut a check and then call it a day. Well, this is how we would do it. We would say, okay, we need this done. This is what our cost is. You just pay that debt service annually. Earlier this year, Mr. Plasko, if you remember, we wanted to add a certain amount of cash spending for the sewer rates, and you said we should instead borrow the money and try, instead of doing it all upfront, increase it little by little all the time. This is the same process.
Yeah, but this is improvements for them, not for us.
Well, we get a benefit from the water lining as well. This is work that gets done on our infrastructure that we at some point would like to get to but are never going to get to, not necessarily going to get to in a reasonable amount of time. So this is...
You're talking about the lining and so...
Correct, this is what this is for. This is for the lining. This doesn't have to do with the fact that they've got to separately, they've got to pay for the actual connection, they've got to pay for the pump station. That's separate. This is for the lining that takes place on our property.
With that clarification, I mean, I understand, that puts it over the top. We're talking about putting it on the warrant.
These are the lines that go in our...
So what you're saying, we would have spent the money one way or the other?
At some point, yeah, you know, we have the 30-year backlog on water lining.
Eventually, yeah.
Want to continue?
Yep.
Please?
Number 14.
Number 14 is the acquisition of the East Walpole Cemetery. As the Board is aware, several times over the last couple of, probably five to 10 years, the East Walpole Cemetery Association has approached the town and asked the town if they'd be interested in purchasing the land. The cemetery itself is in, about half in Norwood, and then there's some vacant land in Walpole. Town Meeting, I believe, declined to purchase the land several years ago. I think the cost was around $1 million. They've come back and asked, would we take as a gift the land that is primarily the cemetery? It's about 13 acres. Along with that, so they would donate that land to the town. It would permanently preserve the land. It would allow us to be able to make sure we're preserving the history of the cemetery. They'd also be willing to donate or give out of the funds from when they sell the other parcel of land, $150,000 for the long-term care of the cemetery. And the benefit to the town beyond some of the historic preservation benefits that we would get, there's some acres of land that may be usable adjacent to the cemetery, not buildable per se, but you might be able to put a small park in there. But the 13 acres would also count towards our exempt property for the purposes of 40B.
That's what really matters, yeah.
So it's a chance to get 13 acres added on at no cost to the town. There'd be an annual maintenance cost. Currently, they're spending by contracting it out about $6,000 a year for the regular maintenance of the cemetery. So this would allow the town to acquire it at no cost to the town, along with $150,000 in funds to be used for the perpetual care of the cemetery going forward. And also those lands, that land is not currently counted in our exempt land towards our 40B number, so we'd be adding 13% to that number. Sorry, 13 acres to that number, not certainly 13%.
Mr. Haja?
Two comments. One is just to clarify that the $150,000 is not going to go into perpetual care. It's for perpetual care, but we don't want to put it in the fund that then gets restricted. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that.
I agree with that.
Okay. Number two, don't forget the row of evergreen trees. And the third is chances of changing the name once the Town of Norwood owns it from the East Walpole Cemetery to something else.
Okay, well, that might not...
Okay, yeah. Just want to throw it out there that we're not Walpole, and appreciate the offer, and I hope we do, I hope this does pass.
Some of it's in Walpole.
I think it's probably officially called, but there was no other name for it, the Bird Cemetery or something, but we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
Thank you.
Number 15 is additional funding for capital projects. This is for, would come from an unexpended prior year capital project balance to reallocate money for the Town Hall Elevator to the tune of about $100,000. The Town Hall Elevator Project, which has been stagnating a bit, was one of the last projects we undertook prior to going through the design process first. The Board remembers, last year at the special, we, sorry, at the annual town meeting, we appropriated money through the Capital Improvement Plan for the elevator at the Civic, and we actually at the last minute added to the dollar amount for that project based on the estimates we were getting from the Town Hall Elevator to make sure that we're getting the full and correct amounts at town meeting and not constantly having to go back. This is one of those last few projects that we believe we're going back again to add money to. We think there's unexpended capital appropriations from prior projects that have closed out, so there should be no net impact to the tax rate or to the borrowing. We do have to get the elevator done, and unfortunately, as you know, I believe the elevator was put in in 1986. As you start trying to repair things and fix things, you have to bring it up to code in a 90-year-old building. That's never easy, even though the elevator's only a little over 30 years. So this would just be additional funds to complete that project.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
On that, I know that the original appropriation was $185,000. So this is, this is over 50% more, but this does include, then it wraps in, at 285, we're getting the design done within that amount.
Correct. It's not just that we're getting the design done, it's just that's a more realistic number. I mean, one of the problems we faced, and we've started to solve that going forward from this past year's budget, is that we were getting estimates for projects, going to town meeting and saying, please give us X dollars for a project, and then we're getting further into the design and the development, and then realizing that those project, you know, those are initial estimates. It's similar, if you call an electrician to your house and say, hey, I want to rewire the house, is he going to say, okay, it's about $15,000? Well, once you actually hire him and he starts doing the work and he starts billing it out, then you realize, hey, maybe it's only 12, or maybe only it's actually going to be 18. And that, of course, differs from the final bill. So this is one of the last capital projects that was approved a couple of years ago that we didn't fully design it and vet it before we went and got our number. We just sort of used an estimate.
Okay.
And that elevator is very much needed by many people in this community too, including myself.
Yeah, there's actually, the challenge with the elevators, the project's going to take three to four weeks, possibly longer, so it'll be a tough period at Town Hall where we'll have to have the elevator shut down. We'll have to make accommodations for services that people are going upstairs that they'll be able to access on the ground floor or the first floor. But it's, the elevator's over 30 years old, it's hanging on.
Thank you for that.
Article 16 is to appropriate transportation network company funds. What those TNC funds are, I call them the Uber money. I'm at some point probably going to get in trouble for that, but the state levy's a small charge on every Uber or Lyft or rideshare service in the Commonwealth, and then that gets reallocated to towns. Last year, it was actually the prior year's amount. We allocated about $9,000 for some bike racks at all of our parks. We'd like to do something similar this town. This time, I've talked with Dr. Thompson. We'd be putting bike racks in at, I believe, five of the schools, the Cokeley and four of the middle schools. He spoke with his teams about where they would like to have them. And we'd also be putting some additional bike racks along the downtown and near the two train stations in town. They have the racks that go, you know, they're the shore, the U-shaped ones that are fairly innocuous. So with the downtown parking lot redesign, we'll include bike racks. We're including bike racks at the parks as part of last year's appropriation, and this spring, in conjunction with that, we'll add more racks. So we're just looking at creative ways to spend a small amount of money, and we haven't really invested a lot in our bike infrastructure. I don't know if bike lanes would ever really work in Norwood, but we can make it a, other modes of transportation as friendly as we can. And I think the idea of putting a lot of them along our main corridor is a good idea, near shops and restaurants, as well as making sure several of the schools will now have additional bike racks for kids to ride to schools, whether it's school or just to use the different fields and playgrounds they have at the schools. Number 17 is a request from the Town Meeting Rules Committee to just give a report to Town Meeting. As the Board is aware, they are looking at a consent agenda for next year for the annual meeting as well as some other items. And then Article 18 is just a placeholder if there aren't any unpaid bills. I don't know if we have any at this point, but we'd like to have that placeholder on there just in case.
And those unpaid bills would be from fiscal...
Correct, from the prior fiscal year. And as the Board knows, just due to our municipal finance regulations, we can't pay prior year bills out of current year funds. Before I move on to the exemptions...
Can I ask a question about the Rules Committee?
You absolutely can.
Are they just planning on talking about the consensus? Because I've seen a couple of their meetings, and I was quite concerned that they were talking about a whole lot of things that didn't have to do with Town Meeting rules and procedures. They had to do, for example, with the capital way, those are part of our financial policies, and they're trying to talk about it's making it part of Town Meeting rules. The Chairman did seem to make that distinction to them, but a lot of the members just kept going back to it. And I know, I basically wrote the current bylaw and put in the provision for this committee, and this committee was intended to look at changes to the rules being used at Town Meeting, not all these other issues.
I do know they've had some wide-ranging discussions. We can certainly report back to the Board. I would, my suggestion would be, and it's ultimately up to the Board, who controls the warrant, the moderator, that perhaps with the special, they should limit their report to what they were asked to look into specifically. I don't think some of the items they have, other than being a general discussion, are ready to act on, nor do I think we should do those things without some preface, but the consent agenda is my understanding of what they should discuss. But we can have that conversation, although I believe they're meeting right now downstairs.
Thank you.
Any other questions on these before I move on to the exemptions?
Questions?
I think we're good.
All right, I'll just pass this out to the Board. I'll just go in brief and talk about the five potential exemptions that we're looking at, and then I believe the Board may have a discussion on whether or not you want to have these on the special or wait until the spring. So the first one, and I'm going to go through this briefly because it does get complicated as you look at different elements of the law. Adopting MGL 59, Section 5C, one and a half, this would allow Town Meeting to set additional exemptions pursuant to regulations in the law. This will be required to add to the Disabled Veterans exemption that is next on the list. The Disabled Veterans increase would go from a $400 exemption to an $800 exemption. You have to adopt 51, sorry, 5C and a half to be able to do that. The next option will be increasing the elderly exemption from $500 to $1,000. This would increase the current exemption for elderly citizens from $500 to $1,000. Be, just so the Board's aware, and I believe you do know this, those are income controlled, so these aren't just anyone who happens to be over a certain age. There are income requirements. The other two would be increasing the surviving spouse, so that's when a spouse loses a, they lose their spouse, and there's a drop in the income. Depending on their asset limits, they're allowed to receive an exemption. This would allow them to receive said exemption, and the requirements are that you have to have lived in town for at least five years, and this does not count, the Section D, which is the one we look at, doesn't count the value of your home towards your assets. Some of the other options would, or they counted a certain portion of it. If you did that, however, given the average property value in Norwood, no one would ever qualify for it. The last one is to increase the second half of the surviving spouse exemption would be to apply a cost of living increase or a cost increase annually to the asset threshold. And it's grateful that the state finally started doing things like this because before they would just pass a new law, and you'd have to go and adopt a new law, and it adds to the complexity. So there's a $40,000 asset threshold for the surviving spouse requirement or the surviving spouse exemption. This would allow that to increase. It's actually, I call it a COLA. It would increase by CPI. The DOR comes up with that number. So that way, in ten years, it's not forty thousand dollars. It will be whatever that number is. If we go forward that way, I highly recommend it. The only, so two things, concerns and one informational item. This wouldn't apply to the next fiscal year. So if the board waits to do these until the annual town meeting, there's no, nobody's losing out on their opportunity to apply to anything. None of this would apply for the next fiscal year anyway. We do, we have looked at some of the preliminary cost estimates. These increases, at least some of them, depending on how you do it, the state doesn't reimburse us for. So some of our exemptions, we do get a reimbursement for the state. So the total cost impact of the town could end up being, and sort of the ballpark figure, is maybe around a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That money comes out of the overlay that we're required by state law to appropriate. I don't believe, and I spoke with the assessor very briefly today, that the overlay can absorb that big of a hit in one year without dramatically increasing the overlay. So some options could be, do we start at a smaller exemption and work it up over time? Correct, step, steps, so to speak. Not that the community may not want to do this, but we may just want to, if we jump into it, we may find out that come the springtime, it's actually a much bigger cost than we were originally looking at. But that's really up for the board to decide. The one recommendation I do have, these are all sort of interrelated. It's, the exemption amount for the additional exemption can be discussed and debated. But it's, we should sort of do all of these or none of these. One of the challenges is that the adopting the ability to add an additional increase, town council has said that they feel you can pick which section gets that increase. Some towns tend to pick every exemption available. If you didn't do that, you could say, we're just going to apply it to veterans. But that would leave out the blind and the elderly, which receive separate exemptions. That becomes a difficult discussion for you folks to have. So it doesn't all have to happen in one year, but we're either going to do them or not do them.
I think what's important, though, is especially with the elderly after this override, we're on the right path.
Yes.
Sir.
Question, Mr. Hajar?
Yep.
Would, would more than one of these apply to the same person?
No, you're allowed to get the highest value exemption, if you will. So if you happen to be a veteran, and that's a four hundred dollar exemption, but there's something else that lets you get an eight hundred dollar exemption, you're, actually, you can pick one. The recommendation is always pick the one that's most advantageous to you. So you'd be, you can't stack them. You can't say, all right, I hit six different categories. The only exception to that one might be the, the blind one might be different. But no, you're not allowed to stack them and eventually pay no taxes. You pick the one that's most advantageous to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hajar, you got a question?
Yeah, well, you had authorized me to actually to work with Bill on the senior aspect of this. I know Alan was working on making sure the veterans was up, up to snuff with regards to what general laws that we have accepted and then moved on. I, quite frankly, wasn't expecting in early October, a special town meeting, to have all this information. I respectfully request that we, we put this off to allow us to get a better handle, at least for me, on the senior ones, which is a little bit more, because we have not done these, as we have been doing the veterans for years, to allow myself from sure along with Bill to gather a little bit more information and to allow the town manager to gather some financial impact numbers, which is important, so that we can do this at once. I would hate to see us to go to town meeting with one or two, and then a bunch of hands raised up. Why didn't you do this one? Why didn't you do that one? And then we're just trying to answer questions rather than try to have the answer. Have a positive aspect to what we're trying to do here. I would rather wait till next, the next special town meeting or annual to present a full and complete package and to be able to answer questions that I think we all want answers to.
Second.
Mr. Plasko, I was going to ask you if you have questions.
Well, no, just likewise, I had brought forward adoption of actually three sections. But after discussions with the manager, we thought it was appropriate that tonight would have been two sections, which are referring to items ten and eleven on our list here. But then later today came up some questions that the manager's talking about, just how this law might affect. We thought it was going to affect just the, originally it was going to just affect increasing the veterans. And now it looks like it's possibly might increase everything. So we just need to make sure we know what we're doing, do it properly. As the manager said, nobody's going to lose out on anything here because it wouldn't take effect till next year's tax period anyhow. So I think it's a wiser, instead of rushing ahead, even though we're all anxious to do something here, that we make, do take the time to do it right and wait for a spring town meeting.
I think what's important here is not time sensitive.
Right.
We have until next fiscal year, so.
So I'd make a motion to eliminate from this list items seven through eleven for the town meeting.
A second then.
Item seven through eleven. Does everybody understand that now? So I have a motion and I have a second to eliminate items seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Any further discussion, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Now, if I can go find out where we are here. Mr. Hajar, apparently you're up next, done finished business regarding the town common.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have to vote tonight to put the rest of them on the warrant?
We just, we probably should technically have a vote.
We actually didn't take a vote to do anything on the warrant. We just voted five things off a list.
You are correct.
So I'll make a motion that we, that we present onto a warrant for the special town meeting on October seventh, the proposed articles on our list, numbers one through six, and numbers twelve through eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the modified list. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Hajar, you'd like to discuss the town common and bandstand rules and regulations?
Right, so we had reviewed them last meeting with changes two weeks ago. So this is really our opportunity to approve the updated set of town rules and regulations regarding the town common and the Walter J. Dempsey Memorial Bandstand. So I would like to move that we approve them as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the modified use of the town common and bandstand. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. And gentlemen, we'll have to sign that tonight before we leave. And if I can continue under Miranda, number one, Selectman's Minutes for approval of the board for the minutes of June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Number two, Paul Halkeodas, Planning Director, submitted correspondence regarding the Community Preservation Act funding increase.
More funds will be available. Thank you for the information.
Yes. The percentages have gone up considerably. There will be more money coming from the state as far as reimbursement. That's a good thing. That's information to file?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Selectman's agenda, Mr. Maloney?
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Mizuko for producing for us an update on the cash, capital improvement program. And perhaps I'll actually sort of kick it over to him to talk a little bit about some of the things that are on his list here. And Mr. Mizuko, are you prepared to cover it at all?
Just in brief, if you want, I am. I sent the board about a week ago, and I'll send it out to Capitol Outlay this week, just an update on some of our capital projects. As the board knows, we, we tend to approve a lot of things at town meeting. And then they sometimes tend to languish, and we make sure we don't always follow up on them. So we're making sure we're following up on them. We're assigning project managers earlier to some of these projects and probably going to do bimonthly updates internally with my team on where we are with some of these projects and where we're moving forward. We're also looking to have Capitol Outlay meet sometime in October. Many towns actually do their capital budget completely in October. What we're probably going to look at is a system where we present updates in October to Capitol Outlay. And really, we'll more or less have the following year's projects ready to go because we have them in the five-year plan. We'll know what's coming on and off. And we'll look at Capitol Outlay to tentatively approve the list in October. And then, once we have a better idea of where we are financially in the spring, they would sort of be coming back, and we'd have some more firm numbers and doing their final approval prior to going to town meeting. It just gives us a better project development cycle. It'll work better once we're doing more engineering ahead of time. We may eventually get to a point where some towns, due to all of their capital in the fall, we don't necessarily need to go that route. But it'll also help with, again, proper engineering and design and project management throughout the course of the year. Because what ends up happening is we know what we want to do, town meeting's coming along, we've got the budget, we've got everything else, and we sort of feel like we're rushing Capitol Outlay in the process. And as a result, the end result from a staff level isn't as good as it could be. So we're looking to start that process earlier, and I believe a meeting will take place sometime in October.
But now, one of the, one of the big things on here is the very first section, municipal parking lots. Can you give us a little bit of an update on that?
Sure can. In the next couple of weeks, Mr. Ryan will be coming before the board with the design of municipal parking lots. And pending your approval of that design, we'll go out to bid for the reconstruction or resurfacing of our municipal parking lots, likely a springtime project. We may be able to get some of them done this year. That's usually good work to get done before it gets too, too cold. But we're looking forward to that. I do believe one of the lots is going to even include more trees and green space, which is a good thing. Other than that, the board will approve the final design of those, and then we'll go out in the spring for them.
That'll be, that was a big thing at town meeting at the Capitol, and Mr. Hajar's on the committee, too. It's not, you know, it's not just a matter of doing sort of needed practical work that, you know, that's been, you know, it's, it's, it's a big investment in the downtown area, along with bylaw, bylaw changes, the overlay district and so forth, too. So we're really enthusiastic about how that'll come out. And, okay. I guess that was, that was the one I really wanted to cover. And we'll work with it to get something together for Capitol Outlay Committee in the next thirty to sixty days, I think. And let's see, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'll also, we did ask a couple of weeks ago for a little update on the Balch Play Area Project. And we did get a response from Mr. Farley on that. I don't know if everyone got that. But if not, I can copy what I, what I transcribed from Mr. Mizuko, from Mr. Farley via Mr. Mizuko. But that'll be, that's underway. Planning is underway. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to wish everyone a happy Norwood Town Day this coming Saturday. We look forward to seeing you all out there. The latest report on the weather is cloudy, but not necessarily rainy. So we hope that, at the very least, that holds. And fireworks on Friday night, isn't that right, Mr. Mizuko?
It doesn't rain.
Fireworks Friday night.
That's correct. If it does rain, we'll move it to Saturday. We'll be making a decision tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, just on Norwood Day, there's no rain date for Norwood Day. Norwood Day is rain or shine. If we have to move the fireworks, they'll be moved to Saturday. We'll be making that decision sometime tomorrow, and we'll communicate that out.
Okay.
Well, there's probably many merchants out there right now praying for rain. Mr. Howard?
Well, they stole my thunder, Mr. Chair, so nothing further this evening.
Thank you.
I would just say, like myself, get your Norwood, before Norwood Day, and save two dollars. What worth it?
Fiscally responsible. Mr. Plasko?
Well, with Mr. Mizuko talking about using Uber money for bike racks in the parking lots when they're designed, I was going to ask when we're going to get that designed, but thanks, Mr. Maloney, that question's been answered. Nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With school radio open Thursday, I want to wish all the students and teachers, administrators, a great year. Hope everyone had a great summer, and that the school year meets everyone's needs for learning, having some fun, being safe, and doing your best. As you know, Mr. Chairman, a couple of weeks ago, you, the board voted that I work on the Morse House rules and regulations. And I did say that they were going to be modeled after the town common. Probably a little bit less strenuous, but to be modeled after that as a start. But I want to acknowledge Dale Day's contribution for keeping the Morse House up and running for the past eighteen years. I know others have been involved, too. I just know of Dale Day's extreme care for that building. She put a lot of money on her own to upkeep it. She cleaned it. She made sure it was, it was nice and clean when either individuals came to look at it if they wanted to use it or organizations, at the end of the day, were, were done. So on behalf, at least of myself, and I'm sure other members of this board, to Dale, thank you very, very much for all the years, time, and effort that you've put in. Mr. Chairman, I would really appreciate if we would vote to give her a certificate for all the work that she has done at the Dale House.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to honor her with a certificate of appreciation for all the work she's done at the Morse House, George Morse House over the years. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To that same point, I'll be having a public meeting on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of September, beginning at seven PM at the Morse House, to discuss the proposed rules and regulations. Because I know a lot of people have been involved in it, and just trying to make sure everyone has their say before it's presented to the board for their final review and approval. People can talk about anything else that's on their mind while I'm there, but it's primarily for the rules and regulations. Can we talk about the resale of cemetery lots? I know that this came up. They have to approve whatever we decide anyways. But an email was going around, Tony and I were, were talking through email with, with Mark Ryan about an individual purchased a cemetery lot in nineteen seventy. He and his family have since moved away to, I believe, Maryland. And he wanted to sell it back to the town. Mark was looking for what is it that we want to do? It was necessarily just up to me or to Tony, but we were going back and forth. Mark, or Paul Vannali, did a little survey of six area towns to see what they do when that comes along. Because it doesn't happen very often that you have someone wanting, wanting to give back their plot. And of the five that responded, all said, all five said that they, the town buys it back for what the individual bought it for. In our case, I think it's three hundred and seventy dollars.
I think that is correct.
So I don't want to make this into a real estate deal. We're worried about, you know, giving the individual interest or not. The person, if we don't buy it back from him or take it back for his original price, I don't know what the person is expected to do with the lot, unless we give it away to someone or family in need or something. But we would still have to have control to do that. So I'd like to make a motion that we repurchase or we buy it back for the amount that the individual paid for it, which I believe is, it's three hundred and sixty dollars, I'm sorry. It was four grave lots purchased in nineteen seventy for three hundred and sixty dollars.
I think in the original paperwork, if I could just speak on the motion, the original paperwork said the man is only looking for what they paid for it. So that's a pretty fair deal.
Mr. Chairman, on that, we, we haven't discussed this prior to now. Is this setting a precedent where we're going to get a lot of calls from people who are demanding? And if we buy one, are we buying a lot?
Yeah, I don't.
Not really crazy about the idea. I mean, it's not the money, but it's just, the person wants to donate it to the town and take a tax exemption for charitable donations. Welcome to doing.
I mean, that was my concern. I guess we'd have to find out how many of these lots are out there. If you, if it's, if there's seven of them out there, and maybe it's going to happen every ten years, it's not a big deal. If there's twenty or thirty of them out there, I don't know if we, what business we want to be in, so to speak. My, David and I disagree on this. He thinks we should buy it back for three hundred and sixty dollars. I think we should say all sales are final. But I don't know how many of these lots there are out there that this could apply to. And then I guess the, the next problem, the only other concern I could see is what if somebody buys a lot, and they conclude the process, and then there's some issue with the burial, and then down, you know, they want to sell it two weeks later. I just, I don't know what, I don't, just don't know what, how many lots of these out there. I'm a fan of all sales are final and keep it simple. But if there's five of these out there, and it's going to happen once every ten years, it's not a big deal.
I agree with you, but the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. But that's just the point. We don't know. So that's why I'm not, I'm not going to vote in favor of this proposal now, because I don't know anything about it. It's the first I've heard of it, so if you all want to do it, go ahead.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I don't think there could be too many. And if they do, it's still on an individual basis, whether we want to buy them back or not.
Correct.
So we wouldn't suddenly have to be buying a thousand of them if they could conceivably be out there. I do not remember the end of the story. But it was discussed at this board. It was either recommended by Mr. Carroll or Mr. Ryan, maybe even back to Mr. Welch, that we do a research of all the unused graves, that we make an attempt to contact the individuals, and then buy them back or go through a process to get them back. So that was actually a proactive position at one time. And I don't know if we found out there was an issue on that. I don't remember any report ever coming back or us ever buying any, but we were going to look into it. Maybe it was as simple as the board voted against it. I don't recall.
As a matter of fact, I spoke to Mr. Welch, I spoke to Mr. Welch today, and he does remember doing that.
But I know it was, but I know it was discussed as a, a practical matter to get some of these lots. Now, that's when we were concerned, actually, that we might be running out of space. And now we talk, till we have another forty, fifty years.
It's an opportunity over time, if we do enough of these, to lengthen the period of time that we can still utilize the cemetery itself. And, and I'll get to you in a minute, my friend. If, if we bought it for three hundred and sixty or three hundred and seventy, what do we sell it at today?
Although the lots go for thousands and several thousand dollars, so.
That's it. It's, not that it should be a money-making operation, but we're going to make.
Usually, they're in the old parts of cemetery that are, people pay twice for.
I mean, I know of one particularly, it's, there's ten or twelve lots of that. They bought them years and years ago. It's in my family, my mother's family. And I think only three positions of those twelve are utilized. The rest are sitting there. Mr.?
I don't think you could sell back portions. You have to sell back the whole.
No, but the point is, there's a lot of unused property out there.
The whole purchase.
There's a lot of unused lots.
Could I have one of those, and I'd be close to you forever?
I'm not, I'm not going in.
You might be able to sell the Bishop lots at a premium.
Literally or figuratively, I'm not going in.
No, the serious question is, it was said that there's four lots here. So did they use any of them?
No.
Or they haven't used any of them?
It's a vacant.
Oh, we'd only do it if the whole.
Right.
It's all or nothing.
It's all four for three hundred and sixty. And I, just to back up what Bill's saying, it's one at a time here. This is the first one that I can, you guys have been around on the board long time, but I've listened for many, many years. I don't ever recall this coming before the board about repurchasing. We have an opportunity. The guy is not trying to hold us up. He's just saying, hey, just give me back what I paid for it. We're the ones that'll be, do better in the end. And three hundred and sixty dollars, I'm sure the DPW can find that money in its.
And that's, that's actually, that's actually eight burials, conceivably, on those four plots.
That's correct.
If it works out properly, yes.
So that's, that's a pretty good thing.
So I did make a motion, yes.
There is a motion.
I seconded it.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one vote. The vote passes. Thank you.
Next, I just want to remind everybody about Saturday, the twenty-first of this year, the Norwood World Cup being sponsored by Impact Norwood and the Norwood Soccer Group. It's going to be held at the Coakley Middle School from three to seven PM. You can register on impactnorwood.org. Its groups have three playing. And so from eighth grades, nine through twelve, will play from three to five PM. The grades five through eight, five to seven PM. There'll be lots of food and other things going on there. So people should, it's modeled after what they did with the dodgeball a few months ago, awareness and having fun with the kids. Last week, I attended the Center for Alcohol Policy Conference on behalf of Impact Norwood as their government representative. I spoke to Ted Mahoney, who's the chief of the investigations about our proposed policy that we're attempting to bring up this fall. He recommended that we model after Dedham's. He thought Dedham's was a good policy. That's the one that he said, so that's the one that we'll probably go after instead of reinventing the wheel. If he thought that was good to follow, that's what we'll do. I did want to just give an update on the open lot storage, because I've been conversing with Paul Halkeodas himself about it. And the, the holdup is that they were trying to get a consultant on board to do an inventory of everything along Route One, so we can see where, where we need regulations and where we don't. So this was from last week, so Kathy's sending out her request for qualifications to six planning consultant firms that went out. They're going to be given two weeks to submit proposals. The deadline's tomorrow, the fourth. He anticipated getting a few good proposals. They want to select it and get underway by mid-September, provide six months for the project, and hopefully be ready for the zoning bylaw and map amendments for this spring. To me, it's kind of tight. We'll see how it goes. But that's the update on the open lot storage and Route One car to study.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. You're keeping in touch on that matter, involved with it. I keep saying this, emphasizing it. If you could give any time, you have an opportunity for an input, wherever it might be appropriate. It seems to me, when I've seen for a few minutes on television a zoning board meeting or a planning board meeting, and they're talking about open lot storage, there's never reference to. reference to the law of the town accepted that requires that any open lot storage be approved by the fire chief. We need to keep emphasizing that, and if there's any particular bylaws or anything, the zoning bylaws or anything that come of this, then I think it's important that somehow that be worked in there, so that anyone who's considering putting a lot somewhere, when they read the zoning, sees that, that requirement.
Yep.
Thank you.
I should do that. Did you, Bill, want to just give an update on Forbes Hill to the town, so they can know where we are?
Forbes Hill is, we have received a deposit, a non-refundable deposit, $520,000, that's in the town's treasury at this time, working through the general manager, extending the purchaser another 60 days, which I think is about 40, 45 days from today, and we'll see what happens at that time.
Do we have a further deposit to give in that time period?
Do we get a further deposit? No, but we, the deposit normally is held in escrow, what we did in exchange for the exemption, the extension, is that we would hold the, that they would, we would foreclose on the deposit, and it's now, it's the town's money, free and clear.
That money stays.
Well, we could have anyways, with the expiration of the time.
Well, there's, there's always, there's always conditions in purchase agreement, that even though they use the term non-refundable, there's reasons why they can get the funds back. In this case, the wording was that if he didn't close by the extension, we would get the money turned over to us, it has been turned over, we have it on our treasury.
Okay. Thank you.
And this money can only be used according to Mark Good for the reduction in principal and interest payment.
That's my understanding with discussions with Mr. Good, yes.
Right, okay. And last, I just wanted to wish everybody and the town a great Norwood Day coming up at Saturday, enjoy, enjoy, it's always fun, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar. And let me just touch on this before we have my statements to make. We will be going into a very brief executive session at the conclusion of my comments, and I just want the people to know that. I guess my message tonight is about traffic and children over the next coming, coming weeks. School is about to begin, there'll be many children who will be bused, there'll be some children who will be walking, but everybody that drives a motor vehicle, I want you to be extremely cautious and careful for young children on their way to school, especially within the school itself. Stay within the speed limits, and help us all to protect our children going forward for this next school year. With that, I thank you. That is the conclusion of my comments, and we have a request to go into an executive session, and as I told the general public before, there's only 10 reasons by law that you can go into an executive session. And we'll be going into executive session under reason number three, and I'll quote